Good evening. We called over to the regular meeting at the West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present at our meeting tonight. Our opening ceremony will be Councilman Steve Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor. If we just have everybody stand or recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sounds really nice with all our scouts here.
And that's next on our agenda. We recognize special people who come here to visit. Senator Maine, welcome. We'll be hearing from you, I guess, in a couple of minutes. We have some scout troops here. Not quite sure how many. There's a lot. Some of them are really small. So we've got one right on the front row. Are you ready? Okay. If you'll come up and to the microphone here, pull that down so we can hear you. Just a little bit. There you go.
Hi, my name is Lex and I'm from troop 3758 and I go to Valley Crest Elementary and I'm here to work on a weed blow badge.
Okay. Couple of weed blows here. Okay, next.
My name is Kai and I'm from troop 913 and we're from the Kennedy School and we're here to work on the citizenship of the community.
Okay, thank you. Did that get all of them? That's a big group there. So another one over here. Ah, there we go.
My name is Jared and my troop number is 1064 and I'm here to do the badge situation in the community and I go to Hillside Elementary.
Thank you very much. Is that all of them?
Yeah.
Okay. With that then, we'll, well, let's see. We do need to do our minutes. And so, the minutes of November 1st to the council.
Mayor move for approval of the minutes of November 1st. Senator?
Any discussion? Guess they're okay the way they are? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. They're approved. Now we have our public comment time. We have two people, I think, who are here to take some of our public comment time. And so, Senator Maine, would you like to start out?
Please, thank you very much. I'm delighted to be here and I just came from the Capitol and would like to carry their condolences to us in West Valley City for the pain that we feel and the loss that we have. You have a reading clerk? You're the reading clerk? Can you read? You're the clerk. What I brought to you, tomorrow, the Brothers and family is going to come to the Senate and they're going to be honoring the Senate and the House because we're in session. And it's our privilege and honor to be with them and to show our sympathy and our love for them. But what I bring you tonight is some quotes from the President and the Speaker. And I have something there, too. And they asked me to send, bring one to you as the council and one to West Valley Police. And it's just a little snippet from them to show you their wishes for healing and wishes for the family and the condolences for this, for our city that mourns. So if you read that, I appreciate it.
House Speaker Greg Hughes, Senate President Wayne Niederhauser, and Senator Maine share their thoughts on the passing of Officer Cody Brothersen. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Cody Brothersen, the 25-year-old West Valley City Police Officer killed in the line of duty. We are deeply saddened by the news that yet another officer, while serving and protecting his community, has lost his life doing his job. Brothersen was struck and killed as he assisted in the apprehension of individuals fleeing in a stolen car. His death is a great loss to us all. We are grateful for the dedication and service of those who risked their lives to ensure the safety of all Utahns. We honor the peace officers we have lost and we salute those who continue to protect and serve our communities. We will not forget Officer Brothersen's sacrifice. At this difficult time, we extend our most sincere condolences to his fiancee, family, friends, coworkers, and the law enforcement community. House Speaker Greg Hughes. I would like to express our condolences and sincere sympathy to the family, friends, and colleagues of Cody Brothersen. Senseless acts with severe consequences are on the minds and in hearts of each of us as we mourn with you. Your loss truly is our loss. We work for insight and wisdom as we draft and deliberate laws to fortify, protect, and defend. Officers implement in action these very laws on behalf of the citizens of this state. They are the vital heroes of sustained order and security in our communities. We condemn any act committed against them in their line of duty. We honor, respect, and hold in high regard Cody Brothersen, who selflessly risked his life to support the men, women, and children all around him. We pray for peace, comfort, to be and abide with you always. Senate President Wayne Niederhauser.
Turn the page.
With heavy heart and a deep appreciation for our safety officers, we mourn the passing of our West Valley City Police Hero. Officer Brothersen proudly and with passion served and protected the citizens of West Valley City. He served with honor and dignity in the profession he loved. I extend my heartfelt sympathy to his family and to those who served with him in this highest of calling. May peace and comfort be with us all. Senator Karen Maine.
Thank you very much. It was my honor to bring those to you. I went to the President and the Speaker and they were glad to share their thoughts and sincere comfort to us. I'd like to just want to mention one other thing. When we mourn as a city, and we are the second biggest city, it's the same up into our chambers. The senators and representatives have come to me and say, "It could have been us. It could have been our community." And I think Utahns and West Valley citizens, Salt Lake City citizens, all over the state, we hold dear those that protect us. So I want to bring that to our community from the communities in the state of Utah that they all mourn together. And there's never a good thing, but maybe from this tragedy we will be kinder and be more thoughtful and work together. So hopefully this will never happen again to any community, to any family, and to any neighborhood. So I thank you very much. They send this with their love and I hope you will share it with you all. And one for West Valley Police Officers. So if you'll excuse me, I've been in the Capitol all day and I think I'll go home and take these high heels off. So be assured that we'll do the honorable and just, we'll just do the best we can tomorrow to honor them, to know when they come to our little nest on the hill that they'll be treated with love and comfort and respect that they deserve. I appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Senator, is there any time certain for that tomorrow?
It's around 4:00. We go in session at 4:00. So probably, you know, the way we shoot the breeze we do, so it'll be about 4:30. And they'll come to the Senate first and then they'll go to the House.
Thank you.
And we have a nice citation for them for that day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Don Marucci. Oh, I got that correct. Or if not, you can help me.
Father, you're fine. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Don Marucci and for, since 1977, I've been a member of this community. So I've lived here. And since 1974, I've been a business owner in Salt Lake County. Since 1971, or no, I'm sorry, since 1981, I have served as a chaplain for the West Valley Police Department. I am a volunteer. I have never been paid and I've never been asked to be paid. I am here not because an officer has asked me, not because really anybody in the department has asked me, but I'm here with an observation. In all of the years that I've been associated with the police department, I have never seen them around as low as it is now. Never. In spite of the problems that have gone on with the venture program, with some officers who have misbehaved, this is the lowest I've ever seen them around. And I'm not talking about a regular patrol officer. I'm talking about those officers who've been with the city for a long time, who have invested a lot of time in our city and in whom the city has invested much. They're, I cannot say they're all looking to see where they can move, but many of them are looking to see where they can go. The call ratio of West Valley City compared with some of the other cities around us who are paying more than we are is just staggering. I was involved in an accident on 3500 South this past summer. I believe it was August. I was hit by, hit from behind with a Humvee and I was almost at a complete stop and the Humvee was probably going 40 to 45 miles an hour. I was escorting from Floatbed back to Deseret Transportation. We blocked the traffic on 3500 South for over one hour before a police officer came to the scene. I'm not blaming the police department. I'm just saying that there is not enough personnel out there to go around. I've had neighbors come to me and complain that they have fielded, that they have called 911 to address a health problem in our neighborhood and it was over an hour and 20 minutes before officers responded. And the officers were so busy that after they got the reports, they didn't even have time to say thank you to those who had called, who had called reports in and who had responded as any normal responsible citizen should. Now, it would be different if I'm here pleading or begging for a raise for myself. I'm not. And as far as I know, Chief Russo, I met with him in July or August with some of the other chaplains, and all three of us told Chief Russo the same thing. The morale is terrible and it's getting worse. Now, one of the nice things that has come from Officer Brothersen's sacrifice is the city and the citizens of this community have rallied behind the police department. But in the 37, 35 years that I've been with the department, let me tell you the changes that have occurred, that I have seen. We used to take kids home from shoplifting or from run-ins with local establishments and we used to take to their parents and say, "Mom and Dad, this is what happened." We don't do that anymore. And part of the reason is because instead of the, instead of the parent looking down and saying, "What on earth did you do?" The officer is almost assaulted, saying, "What the heck are you doing hassling my kid?" There's been a change in our community and in our society for which you're not responsible. But one of the problems that the officers are facing is they're facing remuneration that is not comparable with the surrounding areas. They're facing increased hostility amongst those that they have to enforce code and laws over. And they're constantly putting themselves in jeopardy. Now, as an employer, I know it's easy to hire somebody. All you have to do is throw enough money at them. It is not easy to get people who are worthwhile to stay if you're underpaying them and if they feel unappreciated. And I am not placing any blame on anybody. All I'm saying is that I perceive, not just as a citizen, but as a member of the department who associates with these men and these women on a fairly intimate basis because nobody's listening to us when we talk in their cars. And I don't go running to the chief or to a lieutenant and say, "Hey, guess what Officer Brothersen just told me?" I've never, ever said that and I never will. But my friends of the city council and Mayor Bigelow, I am telling you, we have a real problem. As a community member and as a taxpaying member of our city, I hate to suggest anything which increase the costs on anybody. But at the same time, I just don't feel that I would be a credible chaplain to my department. I didn't say something when I know that something is wrong with that. And I think something is really seriously wrong now. I'm sorry. So if something can be done, if some consideration can be given, and I know that there's been a, that there was a, that there was a package that was authorized by the city just a little while ago that supposed, that increased the remuneration of some of the officers, but not enough of them and it wasn't enough. It still has not made a whole lot of difference in the talk that I'm hearing. Two years ago, I knew a substantial number of officers that have been with the city for a long time. It is shocking to me. Now, even the sergeants, I don't know because we're, we're passing people through this agency so quickly, I don't even know who they are anymore. So I implore that somehow we address this situation, we put ourselves in their positions. I've been on calls when burglaries are relegated to any officer who can clear next, which is sometimes 35, 40 minutes. I've heard it on the radio. So we need to do something. We formed this city a large part in because we had people running all over the city screaming that we were not getting the coverage from the Salt Lake County Police, County Sheriff's Office. That was a major part of why we formed this city. And now we're finding ourselves, if not even in a worse position than we were back then. So I will, I will just leave this with you and just implore that something be done. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that we had signed up for public comment. Was there anyone else? Seen none, then we'll bring it back to the city council. Mr. Pyle, any comments?
Nothing tonight, sir, thanks.
Okay. Council members, any comments?
Other than I think we have posted shortly after Officer Brothersen's death, the fact that our condolences went out to the family and yesterday with the funeral, we saw that throughout the entire city as we were in that procession and people stood for that procession for over three hours, many of them, to pay respects to Officer Brothersen and his family. My concern also is for the other officers. Chaplain LaRoche, thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. Many times we don't hear from them because we are their bosses, technically. And so they don't share those things with us. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and I'm sure we will, as a council and as an administration, look into that, see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? I think I would add just a couple of comments. I know I've worked with the chief and a few others to try and answer that question. Do we have the same ratio of officers as other cities, which has come in about the same? And if in fact there is a high volume of calls, what is that and how does it compare? Because I'm very interested in understanding what the problem is and how, you know, is it that significant? And so maybe I'll go back to that again. I kind of set it aside recently for other projects, but we'll maybe take another look at that because what we need is some information to say how big is the problem.
Do you want me to provide that information for you?
You're welcome to visit with us afterwards and we can't do it right here in the middle of a meeting. It's not appropriate to jump back and forth, but, but any, I'll say this. Anyone who thinks they can help me in understanding this problem and getting that information, I would welcome and appreciate very much their input. Because until we understand the size of it, you know, and how much we need to do, it would be unfortunate if we decided to take some action and it only solved 10% of the problem. So we would want to know what is it? How real is it? And get our arms around it. And also look at perhaps, are there any other issues surrounding it as well? Just, and it's just, it's not something that we can do overnight, but we certainly want to pursue that. Okay, with that, seen no one else on the council that has comments, we'll go down to our public hearings, which is next on our agenda, item 7. We have application S-20-6, 2016, filed by Craig Larson's final plat approval for East Center Retail Subdivision. This is at about 3074 South Decker Lake Drive. This is a parcel of ground they want to separate off from a larger piece and so that they can start development on that. There's been talk of different types of businesses going in there, such as a restaurant or something else that is not certainly set in stone, but in order to accommodate that type of growth, this particular piece of ground needs to be separated out. So that is the issue before us. With that then, we want to open it for public input on this application. And so we'll now have a public hearing on that. Is there anyone here to speak to this application? Yes, please come forward.
It's been a long time since I was a scout. I have to raise the microphone again. My name is Brandon Ames. Mr. Craig Larson and I are partners at Legacy Design Group, civil engineering firm. And I just want to be here as a representative for Mr. Larson as he is unable to attend tonight. We work on all these projects together. And I know that he mentioned that there were a few questions that had come up previously and it's possible that they've been addressed, but I know one of them was the question of why is it a flag lot was brought up. And according to the laws and regulations that were placed as far as utilities are concerned, the water line that we needed to supply the hotel, the My Place Hotel, with water had to be in an easement owned by My Place Hotel. And so it created a strip of property that needed to be made and therefore ended up creating a flag lot. And I believe another question was brought up is, is the sign for My Place Hotel located on the original piece of property? And it is. It's in that same easement that the water line runs in. But essentially, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have or to hopefully answer any questions you might have and just represent Mr. Larson tonight.
Doesn't look like there are. I don't think this was a really controversial one to start with.
Okay.
So looks like not, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to this? Seen no one else, then we'll bring it back to the council. And we will now consider ordinance 16-50, which is the way that we will take action on this, to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 16-50.
Second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion? I do have to look back and forth a few times because it takes a minute. So, okay. Seen no further discussion, then we'll take a vote. We turn to our city recorder for a roll call vote as required by state law.
Councilmember Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hume?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Northout?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We go to the next item on our agenda. This is application S-24-16, filed by Mike Stewart. This is on Oakwood Homes' final plat approval for the Villages of West Ridge 1B, located at 5345 South, 5680 West. And these are the, we'll have two items in connection with this general area. But if you remember, this is the change from the original plan. This increased the size of the units and therefore modified the total number downward. And there were a number of modifications made in order to meet market requirements, which we're only, seems like we're very happy to oblige because we think it will be better for our community. And these are, if you kind of want to get the location, we always do it by, by what else? By McDonald's. It's out close to the McDonald's on 5600 West and 5400 South. So some of the development has taken place. So that is the introduction to this issue. With that then, we will open it for public input. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this issue? Okay, you're welcome. You're probably the only one.
Probably the only one. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Mike Stewart, representing Oakwood Homes 206 East Winchester, Murray, Utah. So yes, you have several of these before you tonight. And just wanted to thank you all for helping us to get this project relaunched. We're very excited about it. We started doing work out there and I'm just here to answer any questions. Tom, thank you.
Okay, I don't know that there are any questions. I think we're not, probably not quite as excited as you, but we are excited.
I'm very excited because it's been a long time to get this back going again, so I'm happy about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Seen no further input from the public, we'll close the public input portion. We bring it back to the council for your action.
I move for approval, ordinance 16-51.
We have a motion and a second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seen no further discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Northout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we go to item 8 on our agenda, resolutions. We have resolution 16-178. This is an agreement between our city, the redevelopment agency, and Warner Commercial Bands on some property that is located on 5600 West. I've got to get the right one up here. When I click, sometimes I don't click right. And that comes from being, from, I remember before computers were. So they don't respond to me always kindly. Okay, so at 5600 West and 2455 South, and I have to always study this one because... Okay, so at 5600 West and 2455 South, and I have to always study this one, because north is not up, which got me all lost, but with this there, this is a development that will occur there, and agreement we're entering into. We will also deal with this issue in our redevelopment agency meeting that immediately follows this, right? And so when we adjourn, we're not done. We have another meeting. So this is the issue before us. It will bring a new business to that location on 5600 West. We're excited for that. Trying to think if there's anything else there that we ought to cover, but I think that generally gets it introduced. There's some incentive in building permit fees and that. They'll end up constructing about a $4.5 million building, or overall construction cost, and so we will defer some things there in conjunction with that. We think it, and most of these where we do some sort of redevelopment, has to have a very specific payout. The city has, and having been at the state, the city does so much better job. I'll tell you, at the state, some of their payouts were 30 years. And so our city does a fantastic job of bringing people in, treating them fairly, but also making sure that it works for the city as well. So that's the issue before us. With that, we'll turn to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-178.
Second. Property before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our new business, which is application S-25 for 2016, again filed by Mike Stewart, representing Oakwood Homes. This is for phases four and five of the public unit development there at 5315 South, 5680 West. So a part of the project that we were just talking about, this is also another piece of that, and the development that goes on there and continues. Again, we're excited for this to move forward. With that introduction then, this is a little bit larger piece, and so to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of application S-25, 2016.
Second. Property before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our consent agenda. We have resolution 16-179. This is an easement purchase agreement and a retaining wall easement, and temporary construction easement, so that we can build the retaining wall, at property that we have at 5716 South Woodview Drive. This allows access to Mountain View Corridor. It is also a little bit park. There are some other items on the property as well, cellphone tower, so fairly routine thing, but it's our only consent item, so that's the item before us, to the council.
Move for approval of the six items on the consent agenda.
One item.
No. I'd be one item, excuse me, just six.
Six.
Screen here. Resolution 16-179 on the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, we got the second? Okay.
Mark Norton just had a heart attack, too.
Okay. Property before us, any discussion? Seeing none, for the roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our agenda for tonight. There's no executive session. We do have further business to do immediately following this with our redevelopment agency. So then, a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. We are adjourned from our regular city council meeting.
Called the order of the special meeting of the redevelopment agency. Note that all members of the agency are present. Item number three on the agenda, Mr. Pyle, we have two resolutions, 1617 and 1618. Would you please inform us on the first of those?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you know, from time to time, we enter into, or at least propose to enter into, incentive agreements with various businesses to either attract to or retain here in the city, and tonight we have two of those before us. This one would improve an incentive, approve an incentive agreement between Warner Commercial Vans, that owns a Mercedes Sprinter dealership franchise, and the RDA. We also, as you know, entered, been approved in the previous meeting, and the item on behalf of the city. So in this particular incentive agreement, approximately $66,000 of building permit fees, impact fees, and application fees would be deferred pending the construction and building location of business.
Thank you.
Oh, I also, sorry, sir, also just thought I'd mention, if there are particular questions or we like the renewal of memories or information concerning the project, we do have RDA staff here to speak to this.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. To the council then, any questions or comments or discussion? Or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of resolution 16-17.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. We have a vote, please.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Then we have item 1618, resolution 1618.
Thank you, sir. This is another incentive agreement along the same lines. This one would be with Mountain West Truck Center, involves only the two entities, the business development as well as the RDA. And depending on the particular improvements that are made to the property, this incentive would be somewhere in a much wider range, $88,000 to $1 million, but that would be depending on the actual, as I mentioned, the improvements they make to the property itself. It's located at 2100 South and 7200 West, and would be, I forgot the brand, what's the brand of the vehicles? Volvo, right?
Volvo, Mac, GMC.
Volvo, Mac, and GMC trucks would be sold there.
Okay, then we'll bring it to the council for any questions, discussion, or comments, or a motion, the same.
I move for resolution 16-18.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Could we have a vote, please?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our scheduled business.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Please say no. We are adjourned.